My name is Thomas Lambert, Board of Ed Vice Chairman. And with the absence of Mrs. Crotty, I will be the Acting Chairman of this meeting tonight. I would like to convene this regular meeting of the Board of Education Monday, February 27, 2015, or 17 at 7:30. Item B, please stand for the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice On to item C, Mrs. Davidson, please call the roll.
Mr. Mancini? I'm sorry, Mr. McCauskey?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi?
Here.
Ms. Wilk?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Crotty? Mr. Vintenzi?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Mr. Gamberdahl?
Here.
Ms. Albino?
Here.
Mr. Decker?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. We're on to item D. In your packet, all Board members should have received the February 13, 2017 Board of Ed meeting minutes. Did everyone receive their minutes?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the minutes of the Board of Ed's regular meeting on February 13, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board approve of the minutes from the February 13, 2017, meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes or additions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
One?
Yeah.
One abstention. Motion passes. Moving on to item D, awards and recognitions. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Carnamola for awards and recognition phase of our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. First, I'd just like to take a moment, although I know the Board is well aware of this, to make everyone who's here this evening aware of what Watertown High School does with our students who are 18 to 21 years old and are classified as students with disabilities. By law, all school districts must provide what's called a transition program to transition students who have any form of disability into the work world and life after high school for, again, those 18 to 21. We've been doing it here at Watertown High School for many, many years. This year, we were able to move that program to a site off-site from the high school, which, as you can imagine, is a key part to running an ideal program for young adults who are expecting to transition away from school. They have a work experience, and the way that it was in the past is that they would come to the high school, they would come to an area in the high school that was designated as a starting and sometimes an ending place, and in between, they'd be out mostly in the Watertown community, but we employ some in surrounding towns, also Waterbury, Thomas, and so forth, to get work experience and life skills. Now, however, because we have been able to enter into this partnership with Seaman Company, who graciously agreed to give us the space and for what I'll call nearly no cost, particularly given the amount of space that they gave to us, we are able to give students a real-world and authentic job-related experience. They come in and out of Seaman Company from there to their employers. They learn how to interact within the corporate world that Seaman Company represents and with all of our business partners who are also in that building. And as we moved there, we gave our program a more suitable name, although it is still the Transition Academy. It is now officially the Watertown Transition Academy at Seaman Company. Other districts in the area now see this as an exemplar program, because it is by all accounts, including what the state and federal government require. And therefore, we are taking in students from other districts at this point, who are paying tuition to our district for students to be able to attend this program that we're running out of Seaman Company. So this Seaman Company serves as a home base for the students, and, as I said, they're practicing skills such as inventory, work skills, work-related conversations, anything that we might take for granted as we send out our students into the real world. They practice during the day, they talk about their work experiences, and come back and forth, as I said, as a home base, and also used the gym at Seaman Company. For those of you who don't know, it's a little bit of a, probably was a well-kept secret until I started saying it at meetings such as this, but there is a fitness center at Seaman Company, which they have also allowed our students the use of, which is another key part for many of our students with disabilities to have a physical piece of the program, which, to us as a district, not only gave, again, the students a better chance at using a facility that was with other adults, it saved us money from taking them to an off-site facility, transporting them, and paying for a gym membership somewhere else, for example, like the YMCA, which we had done for many years. That said, I have a statement from Mrs. Crotty, who was ready to talk about the Seaman Company when we had our meeting get put out of business a few weeks ago due to the weather, the continual Monday and/or Tuesday storms that we had. So I'd like to read Mrs. Crotty's statement this evening. "Tonight, the Board of Education honors two people from Seaman Company. Mrs. Lori Fink, Facility Supervisor for Seaman Realty, and Mr. Tom Costello, CFO of Seaman Company and Treasurer for Seaman Realty. Watertown Public Schools believes that all individuals have the potential to be productive members of the community who are competitively employed." Again, this is the point of the Transition Academy. "And for many years, have offered the Transition Program for Students with Disabilities between 18 and 21. Our Transition students are taught essential work and life skills to help transition them into their new role in the adult world and the intern at various supportive businesses in our community. To provide a more authentic program to help our students transition from the high school to real life, we entered into this partnership with Seaman Company and moved it to Seaman's Westbury Park Road Building. While that may seem like just a business transaction between Watertown Public Schools and tonight's honorees and the company they represent, I can assure you it was not, for Lori and Tom are exceptional examples of the foundation of commitment with the Seaman Company. After 110 years of a commitment to U.S. manufacturing, Seaman's core product line is still made right here in Watertown, Connecticut. Much like Watertown Public Schools and the Board of Education, the Seaman Company philosophy is based on a culture of continuous improvement, investing and reinvesting in their own people, products, and infrastructure. From the very beginning of our process, our honorees were very accommodating and believed in the work the Transition Academy was doing. Lori and Tom have worked hard to provide us with affordable space that serves as both a classroom and a home base office for students and their teachers. Without the assistance of tonight's honorees, our students would still be arriving in the very same building they went to high school in. Now, they arrive to the Transition Academy in a professional work environment and start their day in the same building as physical therapy employees, insurance agents, civil engineers, healthcare providers, CPAs, attorneys, machinists, yoga instructors, printers, and software engineers. While at the academy, our students receive training in essential employment skills such as quality assurance, teamwork, managing difficult situations, and appropriate actions and conversations in the workplace. In addition to providing us with the ample space I already mentioned, Lori and Tom arranged for our students to use the fitness center. In the past, as I said, we had to transport students to the Noctuck Y, which came at a much more significant cost. By partnering with us, Lori and Tom are helping to provide our students with positive social interactions and a sense of belonging to the working world that enhances our students' self-esteem and their daily successes. The Board of Education and Watertown Public Schools is pleased to honor Seaman Professionals Lori Fink and Tom Costello for the work they have done to create this invaluable partnership with Watertown High School's Transition Academy. Lori, Tom, if you would please come up." So in the grand scheme of things, this is a very small token of our appreciation for everything that you have done for us.
Thank you very much. More than ever you could have done.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can we get a picture with you?
Sure.
We usually reserve that for students, but we'll all. We'll stand right in the middle.
Okay.
We'll send you the picture.
Thank you very much.
And moving along, as you can see, we have a lot of our little friends from John Trumbull here with us this evening. I'll tell you all right now, my John Trumbull friends who will come up, before I even start to call your names. It's really easy. All you're going to do when I call your name is come up here, and I'll give you your certificate. Actually, Mr. Lambert will give you your certificate. I'll call your name, and then just move to the side right there. And when we're done calling all of the names, I'll come out and we'll take a picture for your families, okay? So, very easy. "The Watertown Board of Education wishes to recognize the following first-grade students from John Trumbull Primary School." And I'm sorry, actually, we have kindergarten, grade one, and grade two. "These students model appropriate behavior at all times and consistently show the three Rs: ready, responsible, and respectful." We'll start with kindergarten. Right over there, Gracie, right to the side. You've got it. Right here, honey. Nyla.
Hi, baby.
Watch the wire there.
Keep forgetting myself and trying to shake the hands of kindergarteners. In grade one, Dylan Hahney.[775.04][775.04](applause) Hi, Dylan. Just wanted to make sure. In grade two, Alexandra Zombar.[815.54][815.54](applause) And last but not least, Juliette Molina.[835.93][835.93](applause) Okay, I'll come out.
And Mrs. Meckler's here, I believe, right? Friends, here's what we're going to do. We're going to move right into the middle, okay? We're going to move into the middle. Just go ahead and follow Mrs. Meckler. Okay, we have teachers too.
Congratulations, guys. Good job.
Okay, let's hold our certificates so we have a dad. Wonderful. Like this. This, okay, honey? Turn this around. Okay. Okay. Okay, everybody. This is really easy. I'll say look to the left, and we'll all look over here. Then we'll look in the middle, and we'll look to the right, and we'll always go. All right, everybody, ready? Look to the left, that right over there. Okay, now, it looks like I'm. Thank you for bringing them. Thank you. Thank you. You have a really exciting line item to watch. Totally. I know. Friends, Delight? Yes. Hi, Mom. Hi, Mom. I know. I know. The doors are locked. I have to go all the way around. You act like the main door of the library. Maybe she can lock the door for you, but I don't know. Probably not. You might be able to. Parents, if you do want to see the budget, I'll present John Trumbull's meeting on Wednesday night, 7:00 at John Trumbull. I'll present the budget. If you want to come and see what we're doing.
Did you get my good sign? Yeah. Really the bad sign. Oh, good sign, sorry. You still got it.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Okay, so we'll move on to item F, report from Student Council Representative, Ali Decker.
Mr. Decker, you might as well wait a second. Yeah. You want to slide bigger?
Yeah, I have.
Yep, go ahead.
At John Trumbull, the monthly Gotcha Award was celebrated, with students showing mastery of school expectations through usage of the three Rs: ready, responsible, and respectful. At Judson, through Student Council's heart-selling fundraiser, a total of $400 was donated to the American Heart Association. Also, a math night for Polk and Judson parents is being held on Thursday, March 2, in the Judson Library from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. At Polk, randomly chosen Polk, randomly chosen grade four students participated in NAEP testing this past Wednesday, February 22. Polk's monthly town meeting took place on Friday, February 24. At Swift Middle School, a full-school spirit rally was held, with students being recognized for both athletic and academic achievements, as well as club involvement. On Wednesday, February 22, the Swift community treated their bus drivers to a bus driver appreciation breakfast at the school hosted by the Peace Pals. Dr. Carnamola and Dr. Parlato were in attendance. And finally, at Watertown High School, on February 22, our ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students participated in practice SAT or CAP tests to prepare for the upcoming statewide testing day. And scholarship workshops are underway for seniors as they prepare for post-secondary futures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And we'll move on to item number G, superintendent's report. Dr. Carnamola.
Thank you. Just a couple of items to add on to what Mr. Decker said. First, I'd like to officially welcome Officer Rivera from the Watertown Police Department as our new school resource officer, who serves the whole district, but primarily her time will be split between Watertown High School and Swift Middle School. We will have Officer Rivera with us from last week until approximately the middle of April, I believe, and then we will have Officer De Sina coming. So we're splitting the remainder of the year between two officers, and I'd like to thank Chief Gavallas for sending us someone. As you know, it is a key position in the school district to have, particularly in regards to community policing and being able to work with our staff and our families and our children in many ways, other than what you might think police officers typically do as school resource officers. It's a large connection with us, with our community, and I'm grateful to have Officer Rivera with us. As you all know, we've had four snow days. I wanted to make sure I said this on the record, because I know there are a lot of questions. At this point, that would make our last day, June, Friday, June 16. Again, that is assuming that Mother Nature cooperates, and there are no additional cancellations due to snow, but at this point, our last day had been scheduled for Monday, June 12, and now it is Friday, June 16. That said, we do not have graduation at Swift and the high school scheduled just yet, because we wait at least until the end of February to establish those dates, to make sure that we are compliant with state law and getting in the required number of days before graduation is scheduled. Again, though, one could make an assumption at this point that if there were no more cancellations, that one graduation would be on Thursday, and the other would be on Friday, and the administrators. And I will be talking about that, again, sometime around March 1. In the interest of time, given that we're doing the line item report also, I will end that there.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item H, 2017, 2018, opposed budget discussion. Again, Dr. Carnamola.
Thank you. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm going to go through the line item tonight, and then we can ask questions and finish up any discussion related to that. So again, these are the categories that, the broad overarching categories that the budget gets broken into: salary and wages, benefits, professional services, utilities, maintenance, and so forth. And we will go section by section. I think if it pleases the Board, I'll stop at every section. That way, we don't get too far in case there are questions. And I think, you know, for the most part, I'll hit the highlights of the line item, given how much we spoke about at the last meeting. I just wanted to go through the actual numbers. And I know that's a little difficult to read on the screen, so those of you in the audience, I apologize. Board members, this is in front of you, I believe, also. So we'll start with salaries and wages. Overall, as you can see at the bottom, our salary and wages for all staff in the district represent a 1.75% increase to the total overall budget. As I mentioned at the budget presentation, we worked very hard to reduce the salary overall increase, given where we were in some of our contracts for this year. So for example, I'll point out again that you see the teachers' line, which is also stipends and advisors. In other words, anything that would be paid in regards to the teacher's contract, with the exception of coaches, because they are in their own line. So these are not only teacher's salaries, but these are also any stipends they are given for doing things such as Leo Club or the National Honor Society and so forth. And that represents a 1.01% overall change to the budget. We are glad that we were able to mitigate what would have been the number, as I mentioned last week, in this particular contract year. This is the larger of the wages increase. This is the second year of this contract, which is a step and a 3% increase. That's so you can see how much we mitigated through our hiring and not replacing individuals, where we were able to do that, to be able to bring that to a 1% increase. And also, just as a reminder, I think, because we are now two years out from that contract, our negotiations were long, arduous at points, because we were working very closely with teachers to try to give them a raise they deserved, while still keeping in mind the overall taxpayer liability associated with it. And if you remember, that when we settled our contract, we were the lowest increase in the state at the time, and we were the lowest overall increase in the state for quite some time. Right this moment, I can't tell you what it's running at, because we are not in negotiations anymore, but at the time, being just below a 9% overall increase, we had negotiated a very fair increase for our teachers. The principals and the assistant principals you see this year looks to be a little larger of a change than usual, with a 4.71% increase. And as we discussed at a previous meeting when this contract was ratified, this is a new contract, so it will be year one of that contract next year. And the real reason you see that percentage increase is because we actually have additional days administrators are working. So given the requirements of the jobs with the teacher's evaluations and the many changing pieces that are involved, as you know, we are administrators, or building-level administrators, generally speaking, in the past have worked less days than by contract than many other districts in the state. At least on paper, they have worked many less days. I would be remiss if I didn't say that I know that our administrators are here many more days and nights than are required by their contract. But that said, there is an additional five days added into their work year, and so that is the majority of the reason that you see that 4% increase. Again, just hitting some of the highlights, you can see where I think there might be some questions. Our paraprofessionals and aides category, this is also a larger increase than maybe you've seen other times. This is a result of the most recent contract also, which in part negotiated additional training and certification for our paraprofessionals. Again, these are primarily individuals who work with students with special needs and in classrooms with students with special needs. And one of the items that was negotiated in their contract was additional training for what we call registered behavior technicians. And that is something that, without our own people, we pay through services, while we may not entirely eliminate the need to contract services for behavior technicians who are working with our students, often students with autism, for example, who are working one-on-one with behavior technicians, learning responses and speech and so forth, are the type we might contract for if we don't have our own trained. And it is a hefty bill when we are contracting for them. It's typically around $4,000 to $5,000 a month for a behavior technician. So again, negotiating into our own contract, having our own people with that training to the extent that we can, was something that we really wanted to do. So that's part of this increase. Another piece of the increase is a 2.25% raise and some additional hours that were necessary, again, with the increasing number of students with special needs. As I mentioned at the budget presentation, in this year, just since the beginning of this school year, we have an additional 38 students classified as special education in the past six months. The other piece, I think, that's noteworthy here is down to coaches. You see that increase. Part of that, of course, is a step increase and a raise associated with coaches that is a part of, again, the teacher's contract. Not that all of our coaches are teachers, but those salaries are governed by the teacher's contract. And also, the athletic director's salary is in that line. It had always been in that line, and so the other piece of that increase is the athletic director's salary, because remember, this year, part of the athletic director's salary is paid out of the teacher's line, and in this line item that you're looking at, it is all paid out of the same line. We reduced some of our numbers, you see, for tutoring and for substitutes. I spoke quite a bit about that at the previous meeting. That's us paying very close attention to what's been spent over time over the past three years, and modifying where we expect to be based on looking at our history of what we have paid. And we've, again, this is one of those things, you can't always project. For example, tutoring and homebound, we do our best to project what that might look like any given year, since much of that money comes from, goes towards students who are out, as it says, on homebound, very often for medical issues. So at this point, when we look over the course of this year, we see that we have been in a better place. three years and modifying where we expect to be based on looking at our history of what we have paid. And we've, again, this is one of those things, you can't always project. For example, tutoring and homebound, we do our best to project what that might look like any given year since much of that money comes from, goes towards students who are out, as it says, on homebound, very often for medical issues. So at this point, when we look over the course of this year, we see that we have been in a better place and we've reduced the number, but from year to year, that's a moving target. Any questions about the salary and wages piece? Or any questions about any of the line items that I didn't address? I apologize, I did want to hit on, even though it's only $13,000 additional, it's an 8% change, so I wanted to point out, when you see non-affiliates and other, our three drivers who drive our vans that we leased so that we were able to save on external transportation costs are in that line. And they, again, as we have used our own vans more and more to save money on the other end of transportation, for example, driving students to Oliver Woolcott Tech, which, you know, we're required to do by law if they choose to go to a technical school, we drive them to Bristol Tech, we drive them to Oliver Woolcott Tech, those vans are used there. They're also used in the transition program, driving our students back and forth to work sites, which has always been the case. That's not something new with the Transition Academy, but as we have utilized the drivers more and more, we've added in some hours there to accurately reflect what they have been paid. And again, any questions here? Certainly, I'll come back if we have some after. In the benefits category, as you can see, for the most part, not for the most part, in entirety, these are numbers that we really would, for the most part, consider fixed costs. These are all numbers that are generated by, you know, our insurance carriers, workers' compensation, or the government with Social Security, for example. So our workers' compensation, we had a better year, the number went down. Social Security, the number we were given was $200 more, without much explanation there. The town pension, the number went down a bit. Some of that is due to change in workforce and folks retiring. As you know, and I talked quite a bit about two weeks ago, the Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield number, up a tremendous amount with an $886,297 increase, which is a 16.09% overall increase in that one line. Dental also up a little bit in conjunction, it would a 0.43% increase. Our unemployment, down a bit. And as you can see, the rest are pretty much steady. So overall, our benefits are up 10.89% or 805,322. Moving on to professional services, the first line here, professional and technical services, I'll just start by differentiating between the first and the last line because they appear the same. These are the headings in our line item budget, they are obviously not the same. Professional and technical services, the top one, is primarily services related to special education. So occupational therapists that need to work with students, physical therapists, nursing services, additional nursing services beyond our own, some of the outside service providers that we bring in to work with students, for example, with autism or with other needs that are unable to be met within the school district, but we're still maintaining the students in the school district rather than outplacing them. That is primarily what this line is for, and it has steadily risen over the years. This line is, as you look at it, already offset by the projected amount for excess cost reimbursement for special education. Now, as you know, there is much talk in the state about what that will look like next year and different plans that have been proposed by Governor Malloy. The numbers, therefore, are not hard and fast. We have some projections of what it might look like, and as we usually try to do when we are talking about reimbursements, we have erred conservatively in what we expect to be reimbursed here because these are absolutely necessary programs and services to provide. And so whether or not we are reimbursed, we will provide the services and we will pay for them. So we have tried to, again, be conservative and assume a, I believe, a 60% reimbursement rate. And again, as a reminder, that's when we are over and above the per pupil expenditure. So it's not 60% of $748,850. Our software service contracts, it's a small change, that's related to some upgrades that have changed the need for because we did it last year. We are leaving our legal counsel as is. Again, we will be negotiating some contracts this year. We have begun negotiating the custodial contract, for example, already, and I believe at the end of the year, we will start on the secretaries. Our in-service training, we have left steady because, again, we're trying to mitigate the other costs in this budget. Our professional services, these are the non-special education professional services. So for example, these are, this is police, fire, when they're necessary for games or for other events at the school by code. Our officials and referees for games fall into this category, and also the interns, the teaching interns that come to us from colleges. This is for five interns. We always have one intern at each school. And the primary cost increase there are the cost of contracts increasing, increased costs for fire, for police, for referees, the officials. Any questions about this section or what else is here? I'll also mention, there's one piece that is not special education that is in the professional and technical services line. I always have to remember this myself because it kind of seems at odds with the rest of what's in professional services. The athletic trainer, that's a requirement for the district to have who works with students, especially if they get injuries while they're out in the field and so forth. That person's salaries in professional and technical services, not in professional services. And again, that's a requirement by law. I think folks often think, you know, we have an athletic trainer as if we're, you know, the Patriots or something. It doesn't quite work, doesn't quite work that way. It's related to not only injuries, but in supervising some of what happens as students return from having an injury, helping to do concussion screening, for example. Utilities and maintenance, our water and sewer. Again, this is just looking at what we have spent and adjusting the number. Our electricity, as I already spoke about, is down as a combination of ensuring that we are adjusting the number based on what we've spent and also the start, the first year of some of the realization of the savings from the LED lighting program. Our telephone service, in reality, is not increasing so much as that we are not getting as much funding to reduce it because our E-Rate grant, as you remember me saying, I think the last two years, the dollar amount that you are able to use toward telephone, first of all, the overall dollar amount of the grant has been going down every year, but also being able to use it for telephone service has been taken away because it's for different sorts of technology. So as you know, we're using that money in other ways to build infrastructure for IT. So in reality, we have a five-year contract for our telephone service and our rate won't change, but what we will actually pay will increase because we won't be able to offset it as much by the grant. Our heating oil, thank you. Last minute question I have for Mrs. Brown today because I knew we had locked in for next year, $1.97 a gallon we've locked in for next year for heating oil. And so what you see here is a reflection of what we project we will use based on what we have been using and that cost. And again, as you know, with natural gas, we go back and forth depending on the cost, whether we use natural gas or oil because our systems can do both. Our refuse removal is up just a bit. And I'll point out where it looks like we're way up in one line and down in the other. You see contracted services and repairs and lease rental. The reality is that's really one line moving to the other. So where you see that we are down $123,201 in contracted services, but we're up $121 in lease rental, that's due to our new copier contract. So we're still netting a savings there, but we are leasing new copiers and printers, and therefore, we have changed the line that it was coming out of. And as you can see, maintenance projects, we spoke quite a bit of this, this is just part of the cuts. This is reducing from the get-go the amount of money we had available to us to maintain the buildings and do any other maintenance projects. And so overall, we are down 3.97% in maintenance services. Any questions here? Transportation, there's a 2% increase in our contract for busing. We are down a bit in what we expect for diesel fuel. Our special ed, transportation for in-district and out-of-district, again, this is a place where excess cost comes into effect as long as we receive excess cost monies in any way, which we do expect to continue because we are mandated to provide these services. So we expect that some money will continue to come to the district and the town to assist with special education costs. Again, it's just a moving target, exactly what it will end up being, but overall, that is down a bit, and in part, that's down, remember, because we are transporting our students to some degree on our own. On the other hand, we are up a bit in transportation to career and vocational technical schools. Our summer program, we expect to cost about the same. And our athletics and field trips is up just a bit, and again, that's mostly due to increased cost of busing in general. So, but again, overall, we are looking for a 3.5% decrease in transportation. And most of that is because we are looking to continue using our own vehicles to reduce the amount we are paying others to transport our students. Any questions here? So in the broad category of other services, really, we have our insurance, our property and our liability insurance. Our property insurance remains the same, our liability insurance went up a bit. Again, these are numbers from our carriers. Travel and conferences, you see up, but that is simply because this is where we account for the mileage. So it's not only really about, when it looks like travel, this is not to say that we are all traveling to lush places for training and so forth. That increase is really ensuring that we are accurately accounting for any of the standard mileage reimbursement that we have to pay employees for driving their vehicles from school to school and so forth. So again, that number is a projection for next year based on what we have spent in this year. Licensing dues and fees is down a bit. That, again, is us making cuts and also trying to look at where we have spent the money in previous years and reduce it if we could. So we have an increase here overall, mostly due to the increase in liability insurance. We've tried to mitigate in some other ways, as you can see, but we're still at a 4.3% increase or just under $20,000. Any questions here? And I know you've seen quite a bit of these already, so I wouldn't expect many, but... Student tuitions, these are tuitions that we have to pay to other schools or districts for students who are residents in Watertown to attend. So for Magnet School, for example, we have two students who are attending Magnet Schools, one in Bloomfield and one in Hartford, and that is a total of their tuition to go to those two schools, the $9,000 on the top. As you know, our students can attend the Boag program at Nanowog, and we are expecting that tuition to be about the same based on the number of students, and that would be $255,000 with no change. Our special education tuition line, as you can see, is up. This is, again, is also offset by excess cost. Again, these are students who it has been determined need an alternate setting based on the special education needs that they present. And so when, where that says LEA, that's just to get it to fit on this slide, but that means we have placed them, the local education authority has placed them. Whereas below, the Department of Children and Families often will place students. And if they are determined to have been residents of Watertown, a portion of that tuition belongs to us. So for example, sometimes a student may have started here, may be placed into foster care, and sometimes that could be in another town, but if the student was originally a resident here when that happened for at least a period of time, that tuition remains ours. And that's, again, a mandate under special education law. The creative youth, we expect to stay the same. This is for two students to attend Wesleyan. This was originally started many years ago as a grant program here that had to be taken over in the local budget to maintain. So I believe at least two years ago, we took this over into the local budget, it might have been three. It's a small amount, but this is to give two of our high school students the ability to go to study at Wesleyan with many other students from around the state. They allow us two slots. Any questions on the student tuitions piece? Supplies and materials, this is one of the places that, depending on how you look at it, fortunately or unfortunately, we can attempt to control costs more. And so as we were looking to make large-scale cuts to this budget to try to mitigate the insurance cost that is driving the majority of the budget, we have reduced the amount of supplies that we will be purchasing. And by supplies, that is overall. So as you can see on the left, these are all different categories of supplies. So just take, for example, that in postage, we are looking to continue to try to reduce the amount of money that we spend in postage. And while that might not be that much, we are still working at it. As you know, we send more and more out electronically, but there are still things that cannot go out electronically, and so we maintain this line for postage. Testing materials and scoring right above it, see, those numbers are up. These are the materials that are necessary for testing of students who require special education services. So they have to be purchased, they have to be up to date, and there is an increase there. As I mentioned, there's an increase in our special education population. Our computer software, you see that is down. Those are cuts that we made. Our textbooks and workbooks, down just a bit, but those are cuts that we made. Our other, what we call other supplies, which a lot of that is printing supplies and some small library supplies, we cut those back based on what we had spent in previous years and, again, attempting to reduce this budget. And again, $3,845, in the big scheme of things isn't, you know, a large percentage of, you know, 40-plus million dollars, but it was another place we were able to cut back. Likewise, in the top, teaching supplies, a 15, almost 16% decrease. That is, as I mentioned, four out of the five schools cutting their budgets once we realized where we were with the insurance. And so that is everything from paper to additional books that may have been purchased, not textbooks, but other kinds of books that may have been purchased, just about any kind of supply that might be used in a school is in this line. And so do we like to make a cut here? No, absolutely not. But desperate times call for desperate measures sort of idea behind this budget. Again, we were trying to mitigate the 2.16% increase by health insurance alone. So our administrators and our teachers work together to bring those numbers down. So our administrators and our teachers worked together to bring those numbers down. So overall, here, we had our ten percent decrease, or just about eight hundred, I'm sorry, eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Two more places, the equipment and the capital outlay, as you know, this is a place that we reduce the budget to try to reduce overall costs. This is thirteen thousand dollars less in technology equipment. Again, something else we don't like to cut, but tough choices that we made. This is also partially the reduction in going from infinite campus to power school. And the budget offsets there, we have the E-Rate savings, which is forty thousand dollars, and the rest is what we anticipate in sports fees at the eighty-seven thousand dollars. The two of those together give us the one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. As you see, that's less than the offsets were last year, that's as a result of us reducing the participation fees for students, and also, again, we are getting less of E-Rent, E-Rate dollars. So, again, we are at a two point four zero percent overall increase, or nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Carnamal, a great presentation. I know a lot of us had questions that were answered during our budget committee meeting. We went over a lot of issues and questions, and I know personally, I went through the line item budget cover to cover. A lot of questions I had were answered during your presentation, that you did during our budget meetings, and it was a very, very good presentation package. So, does anybody else have any questions?
I just have a comment. Dr. Carnamal, last, two weeks ago, when you presented this, I think you said, minus the contractual obligations and the insurance, the budget would have went up, what, point two five, was it a quarter of a percent?
Without the insurance alone.
Without, without the insurance alone.
Point two five, yeah, so...
And does the, the trash, does that go out to bid every year, or do we basically stay with...
No, we have a multi-year contract, so when it, when it ends, we walk to bid again.
And the special ed summer program, is that something that we do, or is that required?
That is required, that is mandated by the state and federal government for all students with disabilities who need extended school year services. It's a six-week program we run. So yes, of the two point four zero percent increase, the, what we had control over to any degree, if you will, is a less, is a quarter of a percent of an increase. I think it's important, again, to say that a lot of that has already been achieved through, through the large-scale cuts that we've made at the schools, in, in supplies and teaching supplies, in staff, because, as I said, we have not replaced staff at any place that we have been able to do that already. And as we, as people have left and we have rehired, we have done so with, with an eye on the bottom line, if you will. And while we've tried to, of course, recruit the best people we can for our positions, on the one hand, on the other hand, we have done that while trying to make sure that we were able to save money in the salaries from, in the people that we replaced. So this already represents, for example, some of our class sizes having increased over the entire district, particularly in some of the younger grades, as we've brought in kindergarten and so forth. So as I've already started being asked, you know, well, where, where else could you cut? I'm at a loss for the, for the answer to that, and part of that, I believe, is because, as you know, we've, for the two, almost, almost three, because I kind of count that first year that we started working in the summer, on that very first budget where the cuts had to be made, we have worked really hard to cut everything possible over the years and balance out the savings with what we needed. And, you know, again, we've, we've brought it down to a level where this, this is it. This, this was a tremendous amount of work, it was a tremendous amount of work for more than a year. Really, it, you know, we're already, right now, working on what next year could look like. We started that at the beginning of this school year, actually, alongside of doing this. So while, once again, I know I'm like a broken record when I come up and say, every year I've tried to, my goal has been, how do I get us the best programs and services I can with no increase? Every year, that's how we go into this. And this year, we're, we're at a higher increase than we were last year, and we were getting more out of the budget last year. So this is not as glossy of a budget, if you will, in, in what new it's offering, you know, there's, there's not full day K here, there isn't a big ticket item, if you will. The only big ticket item is the insurance, and that's where we're left.
Any other questions?
I just, I thought I saw something that I just, I mean, if you go back to one of the first slides, I just wanted to ask a question on that, it looked like a mathematical thing to me.
Sure.
And I could, I could be wrong, I'm gonna really, I'm risking my neck here saying this.
Or mine.
It was a twelve, it was something where it was a hundred percent increase, keep, go, go forward, that's it. Yeah, the employee...
Employee assistance?
Yeah, I know, is that a mathematical thing?
No, it's a hundred percent, because you see, in sixteen, seventeen, we had zero in that line.
Yeah, but, I mean, a hundred percent is when you're doubling it, right?
No, well, because it went from zero to twelve thousand, so even though it's only twelve thousand, it's a hundred percent increase.
Yeah.
And that, yeah, that is something we are, we're required to provide, and the town has it too. This is an example of it had been in another line, and we have teased it out so that it was in its own, as it belonged, because it's not a part of the health insurance.
What I'm saying is, like, if you go from six thou, if you go from six thousand to twelve thousand, isn't that a hundred percent increase? You know what I'm saying? So that's kind of...
I know, I know what you're saying, but going from zero, so whether this was zero to five thousand, or it was zero to a hundred thousand, it would have been a hundred, it would have been a hundred percent increase.
I mean, it's just kind of perplexing my mind mathematically, I just didn't, okay, what's it come, all right.
I got it.
That's it.
Thank you for...
It's an actual presentation, just when I saw it, I just...
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Carnamal, first of all, thank you to, to you and Mrs. Brown and your entire team for the countless hours that go into this. You know, it's just, it's mind-boggling, everything that you put in and how you're able to do it with such transparency, so thank you. The one item that jumped out at me was the supplies slide, and I think the only thing I, I wanted to question is because I see supplies, when I think of supplies, I think that's student-facing, that's student-interacting. So while I heard very clearly that this was something that came from the individual school administrators, these recommendations, I guess, you know, for myself, as well as the board, I just want to be confident that they're going to continue to have the resources that they need to, you know, provide the students, you know, with the materials and supplies that they need for the education piece. I, I saw that that was quite a bit in reductions in that area.
And the best answer I can give you is to the best of our ability, living within our means, yes. That means, are, are they going to have to be careful about what is used? Yes, but we still expect, you know, business as usual to be able to be carried on, not that we're, you know, of course, we're not looking, the last place we look to take anything from is anything that directly involves students. But, again, this, we are left with so little that we can control the spending on, that inevitably, students are impacted to some degree. We're still trying to keep how much students are impacted down via this budget. But, yeah, I mean, losing sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars' worth of teaching supplies is a lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Carnamal.
Thank you.
Great presentation. We're gonna move on to item I, public participation. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to item J, report from the board chair. In the absence of Mrs. Crotty, there will be no report. Move on to item K, committee reports. Regulon and instruction committee, Mrs. Rinaldi, any report?
Nothing at this time.
Policy and labor committee, Mr. Frazzenzi.
No report, no report.
Budget and finance committee, that's me. Just to note, there will be a vote on the possible approval of the budget during item M1 action items. Next is facilities, PVC operations committee, that's me. We had a PVC committee meeting and received a municipal center space needs study booklet from Silver and Petroselli and Associates Architects, along with preliminary project schedule, which included items such as design development, engineering approvals, and competitive bidding. Several discussions centered around design issues, construction items, parking space, and timeline issues. Also, the architectural contract that was reviewed by Paul Jessel, our town attorney, he had, with, he had comments, and they are to be reviewed by Silver and Petroselli, and once resolved, they are expected to be, to sign this architectural study in a timely manner. So we're looking forward to that, so we can move on. Next is governance and community engagement, Mr. McCowsky, any report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The governance, community engagement committee met this evening. Our goal is really to engage, to look at ways to engage more parents and the community at large, through enhancing district communication. A few of the areas that we're gonna continue to focus on include making outgoing communications from each of the schools more consistent. We're gonna be looking at ways to educate parents on the various resources available to learn about information, events, things like that going on in the district, social media outlets, how to utilize Power School and update their email addresses, look at how we might be able to use the power of the district calendar more. So a lot of things that we talked about, that we'll be looking at to enhance the communication out with parents and the community at large.
Thank you very much for your report. Next, we're gonna move on to item L, communications. Mrs. Wilk, are there any communications to report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. None, we'll move on to item number M, action items. Consideration to approve the proposed two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget. The proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen was provided and present, and presented to the board on February thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. In accordance with the town charter, the proposed two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget must be provided to the town hall by March second, two thousand seventeen. It is recommended that the board approve of the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Education approve of the proposed budget for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McCowsky, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, thank you. We'll move on to item number two, under the action item. Consideration of the approval of an out-of-town field trip to Hartford, Connecticut. All board members have received a packet regarding this out-of-town field trip. Mrs. Donna Palaquen and Mr. Joseph Han, music teachers at Watertown High School, request permission for an out-of-town field trip to Hartford, Connecticut, for approximately five Watertown High School students. Students will travel to Hartford, Connecticut from March thirtieth through April first, two thousand seventeen, and will participate in the all-state music festival. It is recommended that the board approve of this field trip to Hartford, Connecticut, from March thirtieth through April first, two thousand seventeen, for approximately five Watertown High School students. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Vacation, Board of Education approve an out-of-town field trip to Hartford, Connecticut, for approximately five Watertown High School students and one chaperone. Students will travel to Hartford, Connecticut, from March thirtieth through April first, two thousand seventeen, for the purpose of participating in the all-state music festival.
Thank you, Mr. Frazzenzi, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, we'll move on to third item, under action items. Consideration of the approval of an out-of-state field trip to St. Louis, Missouri. All board members have received a packet regarding this out-of-state field trip. Miss Crystal Vera's teacher at Swift Middle School requests permission for an out-of-state field trip to St. Louis, Missouri, for approximately twenty-eight Watertown High School students, who are all members of the robotics team and six chaperones. The students will travel to St. Louis, Missouri, from April twenty-fourth through May first, two thousand seventeen, and will participate in the world championship first robotics event, along with other teams from around the world. It is recommended that the board approve of this field trip to St. Louis, Missouri, from April twenty-fourth through May first, two thousand seventeen, with approximately twenty-eight Watertown High School students. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Education approve of the out-of-state field trip to St. Louis, Missouri, for approximately twenty-eight Watertown High School students, who are all members of the robotics team and six chaperones. The students will travel to St. Louis, Missouri, from April twenty-fourth through May first, two thousand seventeen, and will participate in the world championship first robotics event, along with other teams from around the world.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk, do I have a second?
Yes, I second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosa. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item N, future agenda items and board members' comments. Do any board members have any agenda items or board member comments?
If I may, Mr. Lambert?
Sure.
I apologize, I took out my calendar because it came to the realization how quickly these dates were coming, that I would present the board, now board-approved budget in our schools within the next two weeks. So I just wanted to, for the public and for the record, tell you when those upcoming dates are. So on Wednesday, March first, I will present the budget at seven o'clock at John Trumbull Primary School, that's for any parents, staff members, community members, anyone who would like to come, seven o'clock, Wednesday, March first, at John Trumbull. At Swift Middle School, at seven o'clock on Tuesday, March seventh, again, Swift Middle School, seven o'clock Tuesday, March seventh. And on Thursday, March ninth, I will be at Polk, also at seven. Those will be on our website also, but just, as you know, I, I try to go out and usurp what would often be the PTO meetings, and we combine some of those so that I can get around to see parents, community members, who may have missed the presentation here. Thank you.
Thank you for that information.
Just one, the one with Polk, that's just in combined?
Yes, so I don't do them at all, five schools, right?
Right.
Right, and the same thing, Swift is the high school and Swift together, but really, any night at any of the schools, anyone can come from any of the other schools or from the community, it's just the way we break up the locations.
Thank you. Any other board members have any comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item O, public participation. This is our second pub, public participation. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to item P, adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned. It is eight forty, next is a thirty-four.
Thank you.